Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular select board meeting. This is the meeting of November 22nd, and if you'll join me, we'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, and let's see, we have we have three members present this evening in the select board room. It's Kurt Hathaway, Mary Ashcroft, and myself, and Sharon Russell will join us on the Zoom call along with Ed Dumas, Mike, and Mike Delahany, our committee reports. The orders have been signed. They're here on your desk, Sharon, for your signature, but they have three signatures. And we have three sets of minutes to approve, take them in order. First set is October 25th.
Move to approve.
Motion been made to approve?
Seconded.
Motion's been seconded. Is there any discussion, additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes of October 25th? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sharon squabbled.
Sharon, you with us?
Yeah, I said aye.
Oh, okay, just with your, with your speaker there, Sharon, you gotta speak up loudly so we can hear you. I just, we didn't get it. Any, any opposed? Hearing none?
Abstained because I wasn't present.
Okay, then the chair will vote to approve, and the minutes are approved. I'll pass those for signature. The next set of minutes is the meeting of November 7th.
Move we approve as printed.
Seconded.
Motion been made and seconded to approve as printed.
Oh, okay.
Any discussion, additions, corrections, deletions to the minutes of November 7th? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Don, you have to vote. The other two weren't here.
Yep, the chair votes yes, and the minutes are approved. The last set of minutes is our last meeting of November 50th, 22.
Move to approve.
Motions made and seconded to approve. Any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes of November 50th? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The minutes are approved. I'll circulate them. Thank you, Kurt. Announcements? Any board members have announcements this evening?
Yeah, I would just like to thank the board for the basket you sent my husband and I while we were, while he was having surgery and I was ill. So, thank you once again.
You're very welcome, Sharon, and I hope Steve is doing fine. I'm sure he is with your care. And, and we wish you a speedy recovery from yours as well. And I thank you for joining us even under, even under the circumstances that you're under. I appreciate it. Any other announcements? I, I have, I have a short story I'd like to tell as, as an announcement, and I've had three weeks to maul on this because I wanted to do it three weeks ago, or approximately three weeks ago. It was three weeks ago Friday when Chief Dumas and I had scheduled a meeting at the Cortina Inn to discuss some refinements of the fence issue that we had, and there seemed to be some misunderstanding, so we had a meeting, and we were in the office with the owner and having a fairly cordial meeting, and Chief Dumas was in his administrative role. Quite proficient at that, I might add, and in came a, one of the employees, rather frantic, screaming, overdose, overdose, anyone have Narcan? And if you ever wanted to see, and, and the reason I tell the story is, and I want to tell the story, is that we, we hear reports every meeting from our, from our police force, and we have voluminous reports of incidents pages long. But we don't get any real, we don't get any real feeling of it. It's done very professionally and succinctly well. To watch our police chief spring up from his chair beside me and go immediately from, from an administrative mode into forty-seven, forty-four years of experience. And his eyes changed, and he just went into police mode, yelling himself, Narcan, Narcan, anyone have Narcan? And someone in the hallway said, I have some. He said, let's go. And he proceeds down the hall to room 276. And me with my repaired hip was somewhat behind. And down, all the way down the hallway, around the corner, up the stairs to room 276. They got there before we did. I got there. The door opened, and the chief went in. And at that point, there was a smell coming from that room that I hadn't smelled in fifty-four years. But it was unmistakable. And the chief came back to the open door and said, we won't need Narcan. Well, I stayed in the hallway for as long as I could stand it, talking with the owner. And before I left, I asked, Deputy Chief had come on the scene, and they were processing the scene, and I asked the chief, I said, well, what, what are you gonna have to do? How long you would have to be in there? And he said, well, the medical examiner has got another case in Wallingford, and it'll be at least three hours before he can make it. Those two officers were in that room under those conditions for five hours with a smell that I couldn't even stand out in the hallway. And I think our people in the town of Rutland and the region as well need to know that they put on thirty-five to forty pounds of equipment every single day, and carry that around. Think of yourself carrying two ten or fifteen pound weights with you all day long. And every single one of these complaints could potentially turn into a dangerous situation for them. So, and these people, I say that, these people, these people have to go home at night after five hours of that and look at their children and their wives or husbands. And they have to live with that. Anyways, I got to thinking about it, and I thought there, there should be something that we can do here to let them know how much we appreciate what they go through every single day for our benefit, for the benefit of the people of Rutland Town. And it's a small, small thing. Bill, Bill has them, and it's, it's too bad because I wanted to do this the Friday, I wanted to do this the Tuesday after this event happened because it was fresh, but it doesn't matter. It's a small, small token that purchased on behalf of the town to award to our, our law enforcement officers. The award is a, it's a thin blue line flag that represents the ideals of justice and freedom, bravery, and solidarity. It has great meaning for the fraternal feelings of police officers and for others in the profession of law enforcement. I would add for the town of Rutland that this award also signifies the superior dedication, bravery, and perseverance of each and every one of our officers during exceedingly challenging times. We've asked much of our police force, and they have risen to the challenge. This award may be small in size, but we ask you to wear it with the same pride that you have shown throughout your careers as it represents the thanks from a grateful town of Rutland for all you do to protect our freedoms and security each and every day. Thank you. And Bill has the awards, and he will, he will present them if you would, if you would just come up and rise. Patrol Officer Angie Skirmishorn. Congratulations, Angie.
Thank you.
Patrol Officer Jimmy Plakis. Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you.
Deputy Chief Ted Washburn will also accept for Chief of Police Ed Dumas.
I've got him, yep.
Give him the second one. Administrative Assistant and Dispatcher Lynette Gallipole, who is visiting with family in Maine. And Second Constable John Paul Fagnant was getting a new pair of eyes up in Williston, and First Constable Mike Delahany, who is online with us. Congratulations, Mike. And where this would pride. Thank you very much, and
Ed's on there, too.
Pardon me?
Ed is on there, too.
Ed, you on there?
I am. Thank you very much, Don. I really appreciate it.
You're very welcome. It's well deserved. And Ted is, will, are you gonna be reporting tonight, Ed, or or will Ted give you a report?
Ted will give the report. He's gonna be there from here.
Okay. And the others do not have to stay, you know, for, for an otherwise boring meeting, but thank you very much.
Getting told to run, so.
We while you can.
And we do have visitors tonight, and out of deference to them, I would think we would take their reports first. That's okay with the board. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. Come on up to the table and
Don, we can't follow that.
Well, I think I got a couple of extra ones.
Don, we also have someone, Don, we also have someone on the agenda, so you can do that after if you want to, but
Right.
I always love coming to these meetings because I see some of my students, and they actually did okay after they met me, and that's reassuring. So, it's nice to see them here. Thank you for having us tonight. This is Olivia Lyons, who is our Communications and Marketing Manager, and we come back about this time every year, and would love to come back, come back more often if you would like. But tonight, we talk about regional marketing, and your town has been at the forefront in supporting the regional marketing initiative in Rutland County.
Introduce yourself for the benefit of the audience.
Sorry about that, yes. Lyle Jepson, Executive Director of the Chamber and Economic Development of the Rutland Region. Longest name we could think of. Affectionately, we call ourselves Cedar. Some people called us Cheddar. We didn't like that, so we said we'd rather be Cedar. So tonight, we're here to talk about what is in this packet, and I'm gonna give that to you in a minute, but one of the things I learned as an educator was don't give the stuff out in the beginning, because then everybody looks at it and they don't listen. Not that you would do that. So, we believe that our regional marketing initiative has been successful, and we have some evidence in here that we're gonna show you. We're moving into year seven right now. And we, in the very beginning, knew this was gonna be a long-range plan, that it needed to be at least a ten-year plan to make sure it was working the way we wanted it to. We have found that people are moving to our region. We're finding that particularly lately. COVID caused people to come. Killington actually doubled their population from seven fifty to fifteen hundred because many people had second homes, and they decided this is where they were gonna be. We're now advertising in Killington because we want them to stay, because we need employees, because our businesses still are looking for employees, particularly our larger businesses like Rutland Regional Medical Center and others. We're also finding, and Olivia can tell you, that when we reach out, and we will show you where we're reaching out to, that we're getting a lot of climate refugees, people that don't like the hot air out in Arizona and Texas. They don't like the fires in the Midwest or in the West, and there's no water in California. And they're looking at Vermont as a safe place to be. Our population is a little bit stagnant still, and we need to increase that population, and we're doing that, quite frankly, for the benefit of our businesses. But it's actually for the benefit of our communities and the families that live in those communities. So I'd like to show you some of this information, and Olivia is much better at talking about it than I am, because she put it together.
And she's also a lot prettier.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have extra copies if people would like to follow along or not. It's okay. Even the types of things you take, and then you put them on a shelf somewhere, and you don't know when to throw them away. And then about once a year, you go through your bookcase and throw things away. So, and we didn't put that picture on there for any particular reason.
I noticed that.
Knowing that you were gonna be here, but anyway, it's Hathaway. So if you look, if you, if you wouldn't mind, I'll kind of, just kind of walk you through this, so
Right side or left side?
Go left side first.
Okay, very good.
Yeah. Left side, you're gonna see our staff, and a couple of years ago, we came and we said, maybe it was on Zoom at that point. We are no longer Rutland Economic Development Corporation or the Chamber. We are now both. We combined, and we are now the Chamber in Economic Development. We have five and a half staff members. And behind that, you're going to see, and one of the things that I'd love to come back and talk to you about at some point is economic development. I jokingly said, we're not bringing money to the communities. We are definitely bringing money to the communities. In the last year, we brought about three million dollars into the, the county through grants that we've written. Would love to come back and talk to you about that. One of those is this Hub Co-Works piece, what you're seeing here. Last Monday, last Monday night, not this Monday, last Monday night, we had an open house at the Hub Co-Works, which is the former Opera House on Merchants Row, as well as what was the Home Service Center, which is the entire second row of Merchants Row on this side of the street. It's about twenty-two thousand square feet. That has now been converted into a co-working facility, and we're about to grow a a business incubator in that. We're hiring staff to do that. We received a grant from the EDA of about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we have local matching money for the same amount that will help us start this over the next three years. Our goal is to bring in tech or digital economy jobs, which are fast-growing, high-paying, and will help our towns with the tax base. So I'd love to have you come take a tour of this facility. If you want, if Bill could even broadcast from there if you wanted to, because we have two corporate training rooms that are teleconference-ready, and we hope that they'll be used for training for our business community, and you could hold meetings there if you wanted to do that. You also see our annual report. And when we did open the Hub Co-Works last Monday night, we were humbly surprised when more than three hundred people showed up. And it was an amazing turnout to just walk around. If you went there today, there were probably five people there. This is kind of a slow start, but we have done no marketing yet, and we will begin to do that. But why we're here tonight is to talk to you about where your money is going when you allow us to put on the ballot a request for one dollar per person for Rutland Town to be participating in that. And Olivia is gonna walk you through the right-hand side because she does all the hard work, and she'll talk to you about where people are coming from.
So underneath the photo of Hathaway's is a little write-up about the Real Rutland Weekend Getaway. That was our most recent campaign where we put social media ads out across the country asking families who are interested in moving here to sign up for this all-inclusive weekend.
Keep going.
All-inclusive weekend. And come here.
The live television.
Not used to it. Come spend a weekend, explore the county, see where you fit in, and really try to test the place out and then come move here. So we had four families come from right outside of LA, Texas, North Carolina, and Manhattan. They came in on Thursday afternoon. They were greeted by us and some other people up in Killington. We had a nice little appetizer time. And then we let them do what they wanted to do on Friday and Saturday because we didn't want to hold their hand and take them along through. Some of the things that they did was kayaking up on the reservoir. They all bundled up and went out. It was forty degrees, but they had a great time. They went rock climbing. They also all took part in a county-wide scavenger hunt, which took them to every town in the county so they could really explore outside of Killington, outside of Rutland City. For Rutland Town, we sent them to the corn maze, and the families that actually took part in the corn maze, they loved it and had a great time. And then on Saturday night, we had a dinner with them, and they had all just opened up after being there, and they were super excited about it. One family told us that they'd met with a Realtor and actually put a house, or put an offer in on a house. It didn't pan out, but they're still searching. They're hoping to move here as soon as possible, and it was a great success that we definitely want to do again. The next page, well, actually, I'll have you look at the page underneath that, so this one. These are the advertisements that we put out across the country, and these are our targeted areas. So Arizona, California, Colorado, Florida, as Lyle said, the hotter climates especially are where people are interested in moving here, and these are the places that we targeted for this program. This graph shows what happens when we actually run a campaign. So the, in June, we are running this campaign, so everything skyrocketed because we were showing it to over two hun, two hundred thousand people.
About four hundred thousand. The reason we show you this graph is that it shows campaigns work. When you spend money, you actually get people with eyes on, and it's all social media. And it's Google, and it's places that I don't even go probably, but other people do. And it's pretty exciting to see the traffic that came through and the number of people that actually chose to put their names in to talk to Olivia. So maybe you want to talk about that.
So we had over four hundred people enter this weekend getaway saying that they were interested in it. I then personally interviewed about thirty of these families who are very serious about moving here, and then we picked the four families out of the hat, and they came here, but we have heard from some of the other people who were interested in coming here, and they're still talking to us, and, you know, they didn't get the weekend getaway, but they still want to come on their own. So we do know that things like that work, and even when we're not running massive campaigns, we've still had since the beginning of this, over two hundred people moved to Rutland County. And we have currently over thirty active concierge volunteers, which are the people who live and work here and are kind of those people's first friend when they come through our program.
So we have a website, realrutland.com, and there's a big button on that that says, would you like to talk to somebody? And so you click that button, and it actually says a concierge, and you will then hear from Carly Haven. Carly Haven is a real person in Rutland County who talks to you, and she will be taking notes. You don't know it, but she's taking notes on you, and she knows that Kurt's thirty years old, and I'm just making this up, has two kids, and he likes to snowboard. And so she's taking those notes because then she says, I want to introduce you to Olivia because she has two kids, she snowboards, and she probably can answer all of your questions. And we get all the questions you would expect, like, what are snow tires? And what is, what is fuel oil anyway? Why do you use fuel oil and not natural gas? So we get all those questions, and it's really interesting to talk to folks. But the secret sauce are the individuals that are then talking to these families and encouraging them to come. Don, you had a question, I could tell, almost.
No, I was just, I was looking at the list, and it's rather extensive, but I was just wondering why you didn't have either Boulder or Colorado Springs because they've, they've experienced such dramatic growth that they can't even handle all of the growth that's coming there, so maybe we could get some of the outflow.
Yeah.
Sure.
These are just some of the most popular areas that we're seeing people show interest from. Those are definitely still on the list, but these were just the ones we targeted in this campaign.
If you wonder how we're spending the money, there's also another page in there that shows you that. We are going to many towns. You're one of ten that has been contributing very regularly, and we're talking to the others as well. And so we are looking for about thirty-five or thirty-four thousand dollars from the municipalities. The business community continues to be the big contributor to this because they're very interested in this program, and they really need people to come to the region. And then you see how we spend that, whether it's staff or outbound marketing and so forth. We're finding, we believe we're finding success. We think there are more people coming to the region, and we know there are, that are not coming through us, but they may be looking at the materials that we're putting in front of them. People don't need permission to move here, so they're not coming to us saying, hey, I want to talk to you. Not everybody does, but a lot of people do. And the nice thing when they do connect with us is that we contact people that they're interested in talking to, like schools and bankers and real estate agents, and so we're the first point of contact for them, and we hope that they find the service helpful.
And we are also helping with retention. So Rutland Regional, they're one of the biggest ones who, they'll send people to us once they move here because they know that if they don't feel comfortable here, they're going to leave. So it's not just people that we're helping who are interested in moving here, but those who have moved here, and we're helping keep them here.
So with your permission, So with your permission, we'd like you to tell us to talk to Bill about getting this on the agenda so that folks can hopefully support and continue to support this. You have been right there. Uh Rutland City the other night voted in sixteen thousand dollars as their con- contribution. Um it's going to be on the ballot in small communities all the way down to Danby and Middletown Springs. So um we're very fortunate with the support we're getting.
So it's a dollar ahead.
We've been asking for a dollar, a, a, a person. Um then I think yours was four thousand seventy-six dollars or something like that. It would be the same as last year, um similar, yeah.
Um couple of questions. For the, I really like the idea of the hub, okay? Which is, I would assume to grow small business entrepreneurs. Are you aware of the yeah, Community Navigator Program at the law school? Which will provide education and also a free-to-them attorney to help with some of the startup pieces. So if you link in with that, that would be good.
We're going to reach out.
Thank you, because I end up finding the attorneys for that. It's a very popular program.
So within the hub, there will be what we're calling the Tech On Ramp Program, which is going to be that uh the support for the businesses. It will include legal services, thank you very much, um marketing. So people like, if you go to the Mint Maker space, uh which is a wonderful place, they can make such cool stuff that I'll never be able to make. They may not have all the other tools they need, like how to market and how to buy insurance and how to do the other things that they need. That's what we hope to help entrepreneurs with. Specifically, the hub is intended for the digital economy. High-speed internet, you could, if you wanted to, you could probably stream fourteen Netflix movies at the same time on your computer. Not that you would, but it's super laser-fast down there um in a, in a nice facility. Would love to have you come visit.
And second question, part of maybe the retention, are you linking these folks with the the art and the music scene in the area? Okay, good. Thanks.
Very important to have things and you know, you'll, you'll hear if you haven't already. Paramount Theater is going to go through a renovation project, a big renovation project. It's going to be wonderful for downtown. Center Street is going to go one way eventually and they're going to be able to bump out restaurants. It's really going to help Rutland Town because what I see happening is people are going to be drawn to the center of the city to do activities and things and on their way out, they're going to be going to the grocery store, going to the gas station, doing all those things that uh the, the, the people need. It's going to help the entire region. Some good things happening right now.
We also had a specialty art tour for the families that came for the Weekend Getaway and told them the different places they could go to around the county.
Good. Thank you.
Olivia put together an amazing uh covered bridge tour, if you want to go on a covered bridge tour. I didn't know how many covered bridges there were around here until she put that together.
You did tell them that they have to hold their breath going through, right? That's the old custom.
Most of them made it through.
Okay, good.
I'd like to invite anyone that's uh joined us uh on, on the Zoom call. If you have any questions of Olivia or Lyle, feel free to chime in.
We weren't that good. This got to be quite. We appreciate your time. We appreciate the time that you put in here. Just like law enforcement, you're doing lots of different things that sometimes you're not asked to do, but you step up and you just do those things. So thank you for all the time you put in. You get paid so much to do it.
I noticed Byron is on, online. That's a beautiful picture, Byron. Good advertising.
Two years ago, we did a campaign as part of the regional marketing initiative to point out all the different communities in, in Rutland County. So we found families in every one of the communities and did a similar thing, asked them what their story was all about. And their stories in their town and our towns are really important to the people that live there.
Thank you very much. Excellent presentation.
And we'll connect with Bill.
Yeah. How long has Olivia been with you? I should ask Olivia, how long have you been with Lyle?
Since February.
Okay, all right. Well, that's great, great.
I know people miss her on W C A X, but we're very happy she's with us.
Yes, I'm very happy too.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stay closely in touch with Bill, Olivia, because you know, we've got and he can help you out and Mike Rowe is on and you know, as you know, we have a fantastic recreation park and.
And whenever anything is going on, let us know. We can put things on events calendars and be there and help promote what you're doing.
Super.
Thank you.
Won't be offended if we go.
This is also the time when we invite anyone who's not on the agenda to join us and I see. Yes, I do.
Dylan, my name's Vic Tomalovich.
Come on up, Vic. Have to add Vic, Vic is my cousin.
Again, my name's Vic Tomalovich. I live up on Quarterline Road on the northern end of it. I was hoping we could discuss and maybe come to some resolution about what I perceive to be a situation that developed when Quarterline Road got repaved. Originally, the end of my driveway in the original Quarterline Road level were even with each other. As a matter of fact, whoever paved back in the day actually paved partially down my driveway. Not very far, but probably ten, twelve feet to make a good access to Quarterline Road. Since Quarterline Road's been paved, um I perceive there to be a significant change in the elevation between Quarterline Road and my driveway's exit. Um, there's a conce- conceivably serious bump there now. I've talked to a few people in the town about it. And originally, it was suggested that the situation was going to get remedied with somebody coming back in and paving from the edge of Quarterline Road out into my driveway approximately ten feet to feather it out, which was a good idea, I thought. Um, that didn't happen and on a second attempt to try to find out what was going on, it was suggested to me that supposedly it was done, which it wasn't. I consequently ended up calling the road commissioner and had him supposedly take a look at it. But I haven't heard back from him and that was more than weeks ago. So I was wondering if anything could be done.
The commissioner is here.
I am here.
And the commissioner can answer your question or not. What's up, Dave? We're not in paving season now.
I don't know what all transpired because that whole thing was paved before I got here, but there is a elevation difference. I'm not sure what the best solution is at this point, quite honestly. I mean, somebody told them they were going to pave ten feet of it. I don't know where that came from, but or twelve feet, whatever it was. Unfortunately, I don't have the resources to be able to do it. So I'll have to deal with the contractor in the spring and see, it's going to have to be cut and taken out and reshaped. It's when it was paved, it was paved significantly higher than it was originally. And now it just kind of drops in.
So you think there might be a possibility to get back to contractor and maybe have him th- them feather it back out?
That's what it's going to have to be. It's going to have to be totally like reshaped because it's you can't do anything with the road.
Understood.
Where it is.
Understood.
So the whole end of the driveway has to be remanufactured, basically.
What's the elevation difference?
Four, five inches probably.
It's a little more than that. Unfortunately, because of the uphill incline, it's, it's not bad on one end, but then it tapers up as it goes up the road. So it's
So it's kind of
It's negotiable, but it is kind of a nuisance. Um it's going to be an issue plowing snow, both for the town and for me. Um so if anything could be done, I'd appreciate it.
Kind of a similar situation to uh the lane up there, Pinnacle G Hill Drive, similar. Except you got an uphill.
Yeah, this is probably a little bit worse than that.
Is this the only property affected?
Yeah, the It's kind of like the only one on that side of the road.
Okay.
So that's kind of where the problem is. Everything else, you know, this, this everything else is almost that grade on the other side of the street. But on this side, it, it drops down in.
So that's on the east side?
In before.
East side.
East, east side, yeah. It's just before the overpass bridge.
Okay.
And unfortunately, my driveway tends to go downhill from Quarterline Road. And it got paved and raised it even higher on that end, so. But any help would be appreciated.
All right. Well, thanks for letting us know.
I think we can fit it in, don't you, Dave? I mean.
Yeah, it'll be spraying. It won't be anything.
That's fine. That's fine. I understand. Yeah. Paving's closed, so. Okay. Thanks for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
Have a nice Thanksgiving.
You too. Take care.
Get your deer yet?
Got one doe during muzzle.
Seeing no other. We'll go to Department Reports, Carrie Clark, Town Clerk and Treasurer. Good evening, Carrie.
Okay, just two things. The first thing is the information in front of you. Um I was leave last meeting, we were having a discussion about the one percent local option tax when we were discussing our budget. Um and I was checking daily when we were going to receive that. And today we received our second quarter for the year. And comparably, um it's if you look at the second quarter of last year, it's up. Um so last year, I believe it was three hundred and eighty-something thousand that we received from local option tax in this quarter and this year um is close to three ninety-five. Overall, we're, we're on track, if not going to receive probably more than what we anticipated. Um I can't say that for sure, but it sure looks like it. The trend is, is there right now. What we have remaining left to um gather anti- you know, anticipated monies, um looks like it would probably come in the next payment that we receive and anything after that would be um extra. So I would say we're in a good situation with that. That's one of the things that I wanted to report to you because I know looking at that will have an impact on what we discuss when we go into discussing the general budget and what we would like to anticipate for the twenty-three, twenty-four year. Because now this will, if this happens and if this continues, we'll have two years of, of um excess than, than when, what we anticipated. So some good information for you.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Um and then the last thing I wanted to update those listening to this meeting is about our recent election. Um I know that there's been several questions um on my end, on, on the public's end, so I hope to clear up anything really tonight. We had a great election. Um everything went smoothly. It was great to see the turnout. We had about sixty-five percent of our residents come and vote, if not send in their absentee ballots. We had over gosh, I think, well, on my side, which was the school side, we had over eight hundred absentee ballots to open and put through the tabulator. Um and that was just my side. So I think overall, we had around twelve hundred of, of our voters that chose to vote that way. Um and then um the remaining came in person. The, the counting that night was very well done. It took a little bit longer than expected, but I blame that on the sensitivity of our tabulators. Um and we are going to work with that in the future, meaning that um the tabulators picked up any kind of mark that was on ballots. And when it didn't like it and it didn't want to feed it through, we put it in the secure part of our tabulator box for hand counting later that night. And we had so many like that because people did these ballots at home a lot of times. Um and so that, that took some time counting, hand counting, and I do want to reach out and say publicly, thank you to um everyone who worked the polls that day, who volunteered, who stayed late, who counted. Um we were here, well, the counters were here until about quarter of twelve that night. So thank you to those and you know who you are. And uh and then Susan and I were here until almost two A M, putting that, putting those um numbers into the system. So I noticed that and this kind of goes along with what I've heard from the public. Um I noticed in our, our Rutland Herald one day, I think it was after the election, a couple of days, their Rutland Town didn't have their numbers, numbers available. And that's because of that reason. They were there. It was just, it was a late, it was a late night, so I think the website of the state didn't um they stopped reporting after certain time. So they were there and the results still remain in our hallway. Um they are posted on our Facebook site and our website. Um if you're asking about any sort of questions like that, two things that got cleared up were, um there was a question, we had a tie in our J P race um for our last seat. And um I was waiting response from the two people involved in the tie and I finally got that res- resolved a couple of days ago. Um one of those two people decided that they didn't want that position and the other person did want it. So um that last, that last seat um is, is now filled and um those results I will um officially put out very soon, but um the state did advise me not to do that quite yet. Um but they are all filled and the unofficial results do still remain in our hallway. Um and then the other question that was floating out there that we now know for sure is there will be a recount um in District Number Two with the candidates in District Number Two. Um what that means for Rutland Town, uh we're not the only one involved in, in District Number Two, for those that don't know. Um so our job in this town of me and a couple of the B C A members, um we need to bring our ballots, which are sealed from election night, bring them over to the court, the county courthouse. The um election, the re- recount is um very well organized, follow state statute and um they will do that uh recount on the twenty-ninth of November at nine A M. And uh our job is to get the ballots and a tabulator and our tape over to them. They've also asked for um the ballots and all of that stuff as well from the city and from Clarendon. So um the results, that's what I was told.
From the city?
Two from the city, two tabulators from the city. I do believe they have part of Rutland Two, maybe, and Clarendon. One is coming from Clarendon, along with their ballots. So um So, um, I await to hear those results momentarily, but until then, we just do what we're told and we move forward. So that is the election in a nutshell.
The tabulators, that's the big machine.
That's the machine that hooks onto the black box.
We have to bring that to the, to the county court.
Uh, Ron Gray's, our county clerk, called me and asked for all of the items that they need, including one tabulator, which also means one of the boxes that the, the tabulate, the ballots fall into. So that will be brought over along with our ballots and our tape and extra ballots for testing.
So they, they will be operating our tabulator.
Correct. Yes. They're, they're all set up and organized with how that rolls out on their end. So they won't need assistance from at least my office to do anything in, in that recap. And with those two things, that's what I have for tonight.
Any questions from any board members?
I think she said you did a great job.
It takes a community and we all, we all did it. Thank you, Sharon. I guess no more questions.
I guess not.
All right.
Thank you, Gary.
Welcome.
Mike Rowe, I see you're on.
I am. Hello, I'd like to thank you all for the gift basket as well. That was greatly appreciated. I am on the mend. I've been to town hall a couple of times, actually. So things are moving slowly but surely for me. So thank you for all of your help and consideration. I only have two, the one mower was delivered, thanks to Dave and the boys. They went and picked it up. I think the day before I went in for surgery, so I did look it over. It's in the garage. And it's everything that we had asked for, to the best of my knowledge that I can uh, see, but it is sitting in our garage, waiting for the first blades of grass of spring. So we're all good with that. So that is wonderful. Um, I'm just trying to think if there's anything else. I think the senior luncheon. I'm not sure on the date, because Randy was going through the school. So if either one of you know it, I know that's coming up fairly soon. So hopefully we can spread that. I believe it is at school in our cafeteria. So that's what they're doing for their holiday luncheon. And other than that, go ahead. Huh? Hello? Did I lose this again? Because this sucks if it does. Sorry, wrong word.
You're fine.
Can you hear me or not?
Oh, yeah, we hear.
We were just messing with you, Mike.
Cause this always happens with me on this computer, so. Uh, you always lose me for some strange reason whenever I'm remote. Um, other than that, everything is good to go. Basketball's underway. Practice will start after, uh, Thanksgiving vacation. Hopefully the rink will be put up fairly soon at school and that will be use at your own risk once that's up to go. And then obviously they can use the parks whenever they want during the winter. Just be respectful and whatever you brought in, please bring out. But that's all I believe I have.
Any questions for Mike? I guess not, Mike.
All right, you guys have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
You, you as well and continue to heal.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
All right, you too, Mike. Our next report is Barbara Pulling, our planning commission chairman. Chairperson. Hey, Barb.
Yep. Pick, pick the title, whatever you prefer, I guess there. Um, yes, good evening. Um, several things to, to report tonight, um, and Mary can help me out if needed on this first one. Um, she and I met last week with Green Mountain Power and it's, uh, relicensing consultants. And we had a pretty productive meeting. GMP is going back and forth with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, FERC, on its relicensing and over the park, whether it should be part of the application or not. Um, GMP is leaning toward taking it out. It's still very interested in, in this project and being a partner with us. Um, but there is some history to that site being considered for a park. It turns out Vermont Marble uh, put it in a license application, um, decades ago. So FERC is kind of hanging on to that and, and I don't know, trying to draw parallels or or, or whatever. But the bottom line is, whether it stays as part of the application or not, GMP wants to proceed with us. And, um, a real good faith, um, effort with that is they've agreed to do, um, a archaeological resources assessment, which, um, they assume is, is going to be needed in that area, um, given its history. So they will arrange for that and get it done. Um, it's too late for the season right now, so probably looking at spring at the earliest, spring of next year. And, um, I, from what I gathered from GMP, once that's done, they will feel more comfortable proceeding with legal agreements and, and, and other things, other important things, uh, with the park and the land transfer and such. However, um, it was decided that an MOU could be drafted now, just to get the parties on record, saying they're going to be working together. And, um, the GMP has also given us a couple of, um, uh, samples of pocket parks that they've done with other municipalities. They've done lease agreements and they've done license agreements. So they're actually kind of old hands at this. So, um, that's, that's what my notes say, Mary. Um, do you have anything to add?
Um, that's a pretty fair summary, Barbara. Um, the one thing that we talked about is, um, phasing in or deciding as a town which parts we want to proceed with when. So we have maybe a three to, you know, three-year plan, um, a little, something proposed for each of the next three years, so. Um, but, but, you know, Green Mountain Power is, you know, they're proceeding along. They, I think we're very pleased to hear from us that the Planning Commission had submitted a report, which Barbara shared with them, that we had brought it up during the townwide celebration, um, had our large map on display and there was a lot of good community interest in what we were doing. So they hadn't heard that piece and I think they were quite pleased that we were still on track.
Yeah, and, and looking ahead, um, you know, the Town Planning Commission can help out where it can. Um, the Regional Planning Commission, um, where I work, um, is willing to help out. Um, and we may want to consider maybe some outside help as well, maybe from some local engineers or consultants. Um, or not. Uh, so I'll leave that on your plate. Where we go next. The other thing I was going to bring up is, um, the energy survey. Uh, the responses are still trickling in. Um, we've got fifty-two total right now. Um, and some interesting that there, there are some definite trends in the survey of those fifty-two. Uh, there is interest in, in, um, the residents who responded of for getting, uh, more information on energy efficiency at their homes. And, um, a little less so on, uh, weatherization, but there is some support for that as well. They had quite a bit to say of what, what the town should be doing. Um, the town should be energy efficient in all of its heating and cooling systems uh, and its lighting. Um, it should have electric hybrid municipal vehicles. Um, but more, even more striking were the numbers for um, support for more sidewalks and more bike lanes. So, I, I guess my question, I can pull this together for you, of course, so you can look at it. Um, should we, uh, think about closing the survey down at this point?
With the fifty. I have a, I have a suggestion for, I guess, all of us, and that is the next circle article, um, articles are due December first. And maybe if you put a little box in there, last chance to take the energy survey and then do a, pick a deadline far enough out so that, you know, because it takes about three weeks to get the, the thing to print. Maybe January first. And then cut it off then.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. Um, great. The, uh, Planning Commission is continuing work on, uh, is rules of procedure. We're getting, uh, kind of bogged down in some of, in some of that and, and we're doing our own rules, uh, rather than just taking, um, Robert's rules, uh, we're, we're tailoring them to what we do. Um, so we're still working on that and we're still working on the, um, the redoing the, um, subdivision ordinance. And if you want to take, if you have time or inclination to take up the permit tracking ordinance, um, or to kick it back to us with any comments, um, certainly open to any suggestions there.
I did promise Dana I'd take a look both at subdivision and at permit tracking, and I haven't found the time to do it yet. So sorry about that.
Okay. Yeah, and I meant, um, I might have missed smoke, um, subdivision, yes, go to Dana. And the permit tracking, probably go to Bill.
Okay, I know him. Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, yeah, that, that Bill guy.
Okay.
So other than that, um, that's all I have unless you have some questions.
Any questions for Barb?
Thank you. You too. Hope you feel like eating.
I, I'm, I'm on what they call the brat diet, bread or, you know, banana toast, applesauce and rice.
Maybe in a couple more days.
Turkey, can you put turkey gravy on the rice, Sharon, at least? That'd help.
No, because it's got gre- you know, there is grease in it. So, hey, listen, you know what? I, I don't live in a foreign land where I have to worry about my children eating. So in the realm of things, you know, just get along, you get along.
Thank you, Barb.
Okay, thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving to you as well. Our next report will be from Chris Clark. I see he is on our call. Town Fire Chief. Good evening, Chris.
Good evening. I really have nothing to report tonight. Um, this past month, we've had fourteen fire calls. We're about up to pushing a hundred and sixty for the year. Nothing else has really been going on, so I really have nothing to report.
What was the call out at McKinley there around, I don't know, three, three thirty?
I think that was the, the tree on wires or the, the telephone pole, post row extension.
Oh, I just saw the, I saw the truck breeze by me there at Hendy, so. I don't know where they were going.
Was it hit?
No, it was on fire, I guess. They go out.
So that's pretty much, pretty much it, Chris, huh? Quiet and quiet is good in the fire business.
You never say the key word.
Thanks, Chris.
You're welcome. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving to you.
Happy Thanksgiving, Chris.
Thank you.
Next report will be from Dave Sears, our Town Road Commissioner. Dave's here with us. Good evening, Dave.
Good evening, y'all. I'm going to say the W word, winter. So our last couple of weeks basically been just getting ready for that. Um, started getting some salt in here the last few days. Um, we're about half full right now. Um, more should be in, uh, first part of next week, should probably fill us up. Um, like I said, we spent the last couple of weeks just gearing up the trucks. Um, we had to kind of rebuild the sander on the, the small tractor for the sidewalks. Chain was all seized up and we had to find a chain and build a chain and all that goofy stuff. Um, we made a decision, I guess Bill and I sort of made a decision to take over the maintenance of the, um, South Main Street sidewalk from U-Haul to the Old Mall and back. Um, the city had been doing it for, since the mall was built. And, uh, pretty much on the cheap. And, um, we got an email from the DPW Commissioner that they were raising the rates to an exorbitant rate. So rather than pay that, we just decided to take them over, so.
So it had been five hundred dollars a year. What did they raise it to?
Well, it was actually, that's what, that's what the town had budgeted.
Yeah.
But it was actually a hundred dollars per clearing, whether they plowed it or snow blow or whatever. It was a hundred bucks to do both sides, so it was pretty cheap.
Yeah.
You know, so, uh, they wanted to raise the rate and it was pretty steep, so we decided to take it over. So we'll be doing that from this point forward. It's just time. You know, it's, uh, it's a lot of snow. When you hit a lot of snow, it's five lanes of traffic or five lanes of road gets shoved up on the sidewalk, so. We'll do it.
So that's U-Haul to the mall.
To the mall and then cross the road and come back.
Okay.
Pretty good stretch. Um, and we did have our first tow in the pond, our first storm. We'll call it a storm. It wasn't really a storm, but it was a snow event. And, um, I'm really proud of the guys. I had one guy that had never plowed in a five ton before. And I had one guy that had never plowed, plowed before. And they nailed it. They did a really good job. And it was, you know, a couple inches. It wasn't a huge terrible thing, but they broke their cherry. So uh, they did it really well. I got no complaints. Uh, and since then, um, we had to do a brake job on the, the F three fifty. And just kind of clean up after the storm. And hopefully next week, uh, if the weather holds for us, which is looking pretty good, uh, we're going to get started on Mike's multi-use path if we can. Doing some, we'll do some layout and some clearing and stuff like that. And probably won't get too crazy with it, but we'll get started.
Flagging maybe, or is, or is the trail pretty well defined already?
Right, right now, it's just, uh, single stakes marked center line. So we're gonna go four feet on each side of it and put other stakes in, kind of get the actual lay of the land a little bit.
Yep.
And we're gonna have to clear some, it's mostly brush. There are some trees that gotta go. A lot of dead, I think they routed it through some, a lot of dead stuff, so there's quite a bit of that stuff that'll have to be taken care of, but it's a nice little winter work.
Good. Good.
That's where we'd be up on the hill.
So the men were also happy with the, with the lay of the land and the roots that they have and so forth that worked well for them?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, um, you know, like I said, one guy had never done it before and he was plowing Grove Street and you know, he was a little, he was a little cautious, which is, I'd rather have him cautious to not, so. Uh, he stayed away from the mailboxes and stuff a little, maybe a little bit too far, but that was better than knocking them all over. So, yeah, they did well.
Well, any questions for Dave? Any online questions for Dave?
Nope, just happy Thanksgiving, Dave. Nope, just happy Thanksgiving, Dave.
Thank you, guys. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, you too.
Ted? Ted Washburn, our deputy chief.
There we go. Couple things, uh, the first being the two, or I should say the four week printout for calls for service. Um, we weren't able to attend the last meeting, so I printed off all of last meetings and the last period's calls, which left us with a hundred and fifty-one calls and fifty-seven traffic stops. Um, same as before. South End, still kicking our butt. Uh, I believe I had ten calls yesterday when I was working and all ten were on the South End. Um, offenses are ranging from the misdemeanors to the felonies. That hasn't changed. Um, locations really haven't changed. Um, coming into the holiday season, so I expect that there's gonna be a little bit uptick anyways. There usually is every year. It's that time of year. Um, so, any questions on, would be the four week period?
No questions, but did you, did you want to give an update on the Home Depot, or would you rather leave that to a future meeting?
No, I can give an update on it.
Yeah, because there's been some significant changes up there, I think.
Um, I have a little bit more on that as well, cause I found out more today when I was up there for another theft. Um, Lynn wanted to put this in the packet as well. It's an email that you all have from the state auditor. They were reviewing our nine month period, our nine month trend, and they saw a, a one hundred and fifty-eight percent increase in larcenies and they called us to see if we were actually joking or not. And we said no, and they're like, okay. So Lynn felt it was appropriate to put that in the packet for everyone to review. Um, and then Lynn also knocked it out of the park and did her monthly comparisons for everybody as well. Uh, so October, we are at, uh, we're down to seventy-two percent of our cases being from the South End. Which is a decrease from July and August and September. Um, so we're slowly going down. Um, any questions on either of those? Okay, um, so talk about Home Depot. Um,
Do you have uh, either a number that equates to ours on the directed patrols?
Uh, Lynn has something, um, but there was, I guess, there was a tweak that she wanted to make to it only because there was time added someplace where it shouldn't have been added. So she wanted to tweak it, but she was going to Maine and I said, go see your family. We can deal with that when she gets back.
Okay. Yeah, I would look forward to that.
Yep. Um, so there's nothing on that. Uh, Home Depot is one heck of a silent victim. Uh, through corporate policies and things of that nature, they, employees are not allowed to call us. Um, I can tell you that daily, there's thousands upon thousands of dollars walking right out that door. Uh, talking to the folks this morning after another theft call that a contractor called in. Uh, we were able to find that individual and give them their citation for stealing and we got some of the property back. Uh, but in talking with the employees this morning, this past Saturday, they had thirty thousand dollars worth of electrical wire. Loaded on a cart, walked right out the door. Uh, pellet stoves, a rolling tool chest. All of these things are just literally rolling right out the front door. And they can't stop them. So.
They won't call us.
They will not. Corporate policy. Um, so what they have finally gotten permission for after all these years is their own loss prevention person in the store. So I would anticipate you, we're going to see a spike in calls for service at two ninety-nine US Route four east, which is Home Depot. Because they will then be allowed to call us. And we can move forward with prosecuting people now that we'll have the in-store support. So. Um, it's kind of where we're at as of today.
So the contractor called because of a theft, was that out of the contractor's vehicle or on the way to the vehicle or?
Loading out front.
Okay.
Some contractors call us, some citizens call us sometimes, but the store employees cannot. So the contractors will sometimes do it. So that's where we're at with Home Depot.
I had a fairly extensive conversation with the chief earlier today and hopefully if, when, when and if they get their loss prevention person on board, um, the policy can improve so that all of the cameras that they have available, and they have a fairly extensive camera system in the store, can be used with loss prevention and our police staff to pretty quickly identify. And a lot of times you, you have prior knowledge of the individuals and then that could facilitate an arrest.
It's the same people. It's every day the same people and that's what the store tells us, you know, same person will come in three, four times a day, load up a car of power tools and walk out the door. So once the word gets out that they can actually be arrested, this hopefully kind of like the South End will make them rethink.
There's also some pretty good leads as to where this stuff is going and might be pursuing that as well.
Possibly.
Okay.
Possibly.
Just leave it at that.
So in regards to Home Depot, that's kind of all I have.
Any questions?
I have one more item that I have to ask about. In your packet, you will see that I attached a Rotten Town Police Department quote from Motorola Solutions slash WatchGuard. Uh, WatchGuard is our in-car and body cameras that we have been deploying for the last five to six years. Um, our current body cameras are on their last life. Um, we had to Frankenstein one of them just to make it work. Um, they no longer make parts for our current cameras, our current body cameras, I should say. Our current in-car cameras are fine. Um, so in April, I put in for a grant. It was a fifty fifty grant through the feds to replace our body cameras, replace our storage, replace everything. Because it was all outdated and the body camera policy in Vermont is now statewide. And we don't meet all of the parameters like we should be. Uh, I was finally notified on October thirty-first that the grant was denied because of, I guess it was a clerical error on my part, that the technical information that I supplied wasn't all in the project narrative. And me thinking that they were sending and reviewing everything at once isn't the way it's done. They send the narrative out for peer review. And peer review said that there wasn't enough technical information. So of the one hundred and sixty-nine agencies that applied for the body cameras grant, they selected twenty-four. Um, so we had earmarked money in depreciation to match the fifty fifty. Um, so I called Motorola. I said, okay, that failed. What's plan B? Uh, plan B is this quote in front of you. It's a five-year contract with Motorola, which is now WatchGuard. Um, very similar to the contract we have with TASER. Where we pay them a certain amount every year and over the course of five years to obtain this equipment. Um, the cycle goes, the first year is the most expensive, where I believe it's thirteen thousand. To get the new system, the new cameras and to get everybody trained. And then after that, it is sixty-one hundred forty-four dollars a year for the next four years. Um, the perks to this program is that we don't have to come up with the full thirty-seven thousand out of pocket immediately. Uh, all of the evidence storage is cloud-based, so it's all housed in WatchGuard in Texas. So we don't have any onsite tech responsibilities as it's all cloud-based and internet-based. Um, after three, they'll send us new cameras after the first payment. In three years, they will send us all brand new replacement cameras at no increase in charge. And then at the end of five years, we will either continue the contract or we will terminate the contract. Um,
What's the life of the cameras, five years?
Five years if they're well-kept, which we've been very fortunate in ours, that ours are five years and we've nursed them along. Uh, but in three.
You say you're gonna get new ones at the end of three.
Correct. WatchGuard at no increase will send us all brand new cameras after three years.
So then those should last five.
Correct. Um,
Which would be three years past our contract.
So the fifty fifty match that we had earmarked at a depreciation was seventeen thousand. Um, the first year's payment is thirteen thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars, which is significantly less than the seventeen thousand we were initially gonna have to come up with. The difference being is that we obviously, we don't own the system. We're renting it basically.
And is, well, just, so you, you would pay thirteen thousand in this current fiscal year that we're in?
Correct.
And then the installment payments of sixty-one forty-four would be beginning in the next budget that we're looking at now?
Yes.
Okay.
So we, where, where's the fifty percent uh, shown on here?
So it's not shown in this. The fifty percent was part of the grant package. That was not shown at this. This is a different program, cause we were initially going after the grant to purchase everything outright. And since it was, I believe, around thirty-five to thirty-six thousand to purchase everything outright. And then we would have owned everything ourselves and been responsible for onsite storage with a server and everything else.
Um, and that's a grant that we didn't get.
That's the grant we did not get. Um, we cannot, we don't have the money to pay that thirty-five thousand, thirty-six thousand in one shot. We just don't. So, the next option that I was presented with was this one.
So where, where would the thirteen come from in this year's budget?
It would come out of depreciation. We had planned for a match of seventeen thousand to come out of depreciation for the grant if we had gotten it.
So would this lease, we're actually saving money out of the depreciation?
Initially, yes.
We would have had to put seventeen.
Correct.
Need a motion on this?
Uh, has the police committee looked at it?
Uh, Joey, I believe Chief Dumas was gonna try to reach out to Joey. Uh, Chief Dumas is out sick with a chest infection. And I know Joey, I believe, is in Pennsylvania.
Texas, no.
No longer.
Mary, to answer your question, I did not reach out to Joe.
Okay. Joe is so good at numbers.
I know.
Yeah, um.
So, and we had.
How good is this, um, quote good for?
Uh, I believe it was good for thirty, well, it's usually either thirty or sixty days.
And are these folks a preferred vendor? Cause we're hopping over the bid process.
Yep. They're the, they operate all of our in-car systems.
And I know that you wanted to keep it all. You almost have to keep it all in the same company.
The, yeah, it makes it a lot easier when it comes to providing video, when it comes to, uh, state's attorneys and all that stuff.
This is almost better in the long run, cause we're gonna get new cameras in three years.
Right, that's what I was thinking. Yep.
So we're gonna.
Mary, the, Mary, the other thing is, they're, they're supplying all the storage for all our video and whatnot, so we don't have to have that main camera up anymore. And this way here, just like with the Tasers, we can just get a new equipment, uh, it's not like a firearm, it's can be good for, you know, fifteen years or more. This is highly technical, uh, equipment and we're involved in fights and frays and whatnot and unfortunately, they get broken, not because we want to, but they do. And this way here, that would protect us from having to come up with all the money to fix them. So it's like a literally we're leasing it for a time and this, we have to, we have to pay money for our storage, for all the videos we have. And the state is requiring us to be able, we have to blow out faces and whatnot to give video to the, the state's attorney or the public if they ask for it.
So if these break, are they covered, like a replacement?
No cost replacement fees for us.
I don't, I don't see this as a problem. Go ahead, Sharon.
I, I think it's a no-brainer. They need them. This is probably, sounds like it's better, so I would move that we would go with that, that option.
That a motion?
It is.
They had motion, motions made, motion seconded, I'll open it to discussion. Um, and I, I'm, I'm sensitive to your concern, Mary, but, but I really don't think Joe would have a problem with this. I mean, I can't
I do have a question though about the cloud storage.
Yes.
Is that becoming the trend now? State's attorney's okay with it?
As long as we were able to meet the discovery requests when they come through, the state's attorney's fine with it.
Okay.
Um, and a lot of small departments around the country are going with cloud-based systems at a central hub because we all know how expensive storage costs are.
Okay, and is Motorola and the, the new company, are they commonly used by Vermont law enforcement folks?
So I know the state police have WatchGuard.
Okay.
They have all brand new systems. Uh, I don't know if they're doing cloud-based, but I would imagine they have their own servers at their headquarters in Waterbury. Um, but they do have, they do have the state contract with the state police.
Other questions, Kurt?
No, the biggest thing is that replacement plan. We're gonna go beat up on the things, you didn't get a new one. Plus, we get new cameras in three years, so.
Yeah, it's, it's a really.
If we get new cameras in three years, even if we don't continue the contract, we'll at least have a couple of years on the cameras.
Yeah, it's a good deal. Real good deal.
Yeah.
What's, um?
And right now, it's out of depreciation, so.
Question is, do we, do we budget the six thousand?
Well, then that's, I think that would be for a future discussion and I would like, leave it at that so that Joe can be involved with that one.
Yeah, we'll just have to remember that when we start sipping through that budget.
Yeah. Any further discussion, any, any further questions? If you're ready for the question, all those in favor of the motion, the motion is to approve thirteen thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars out of the uh, police department depreciation fund for purchase of the body cams, um.
Uh, I think we have to approve the whole contract, right? Cause it's a five-year contract, so.
Correct.
We're talking about thirty-seven thousand seven hundred. So we're committing future select boards, but we do that. I mean, we've done that before for other purchases. So.
That's the same, we're cer- we have, I think, three years left on our TASER contract as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess you're right. It's thirty-seven, seven.
Yep.
With the provision of thirteen one twenty-four out of depreciation for this year's budget. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sharon, if you voted, you're gonna have to vote again.
Aye.
There it is.
And it's, uh, unanimous and the motion is approved. So you got your cameras.
Thank you.
Um, why don't I make a motion also that we authorize the select board chair to sign on behalf of the um, select board, because I suspect the contract will be presented to you to sign. In between meetings.
Do you have it?
And I. And I, he's gonna send it to me. I told him we were gonna be at the last meeting. Hold on what happened. He says, no, just reach out to me when you get your select board approval. He'll send over the signed paperwork.
Okay. Was there a second to that motion?
Yep.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sharon, if you said aye, you need to repeat it, please.
Right, aye.
There it is.
There it is. Okay, I'll sign it when I get it. Is that it, Ted?
All I have tonight.
Okay, thank you.
See what happens when Ted comes instead of Ed?
Spend money. I'm really good at it.
Yeah, but you're usually good at covering it with grants too, so.
Usually, um, I now know.
Based on the, based on the success rate of those applying and those getting it, I would think they were looking for excuses to deny.
But I'm gonna keep trying, it's what I do. So.
There you go. Well, keep up the good work.
Alright, folks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I don't see Mike down there.
Oh, I'm here.
Yes, he is. Our next reporter is Mike Del Hany, our first constable. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening. Um, I just wanna start off by thanking you, Don, and the rest of the select board on an award. From the start of the meeting. Um, it's an honor to serve the town in my capacity, so the recognition is truly appreciated, so. Thank you very much for that. Um, I'm sorry I couldn't be there to uh accept it in person. Moving on from that, um, nothing new. I'm kinda piggybacking off uh Deputy Chief Washburn's report. Um. The holiday season's here, starting Friday morning, and I I know we're gonna have some coverage. Down at the Plaza right before the uh the doors open at six AM. I believe Angie's gonna be down there like at five. But um, you know, with with the holiday rush comes the longer store hours. Uh, the potential for the Home Depot um call volume to to grow. Brings the uptick in potential retail thefts, so it's gonna be a real busy season for everybody. Um, but you know, we'll continue doing what we do best and 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 do our part and uh we'll see how it goes.
Good. Any more, any more specific of reporting or is that pretty much it?
Nope, that's all I've got.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Hearing none. Have a wonderful Thanksgiving, Mike.
You guys as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And JP is out of town. Bill Sweet, our town administrator, is right here.
Good evening.
Evening, Bill, and thanks for helping out with those awards.
Absolutely. My pleasure. Uh, alright. Got a few things to go over. Um. There was a late substitution for a packet item. Uh, that would be the. Draft purchasing policy. I was able to come up with the ballot language.
Was super, thank you.
And you're welcome. Uh, so I also found the. Vote totals, I found a couple of them. I found the ballot language and I went back and checked and a couple of them were voted down, so I went back and took fines. Well, we better find the ones that actually. Passed. Uh, so they're all there. Uh, I imagine we could probably eliminate. Some of the ones going back earlier, but I've left it there for reference for now. Uh, so that was for an old business item. Uh, and based upon the rea- the other reason I. Wanted to point that out was based upon that I did modify the language under definitions for capital improvement and depreciation funds. Because it was necessary. The the language in the ballot items made it. Uh, necessary, like we 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 couldn't really be worded. So um, we had to uh modify it just to reflect what the ballots actually said, so.
Okay.
Um, and. The uh, so that was the depreciation funds and then uh the capital improvement one. Um, basically, I took the ballot question language and put that as the definition because that seemed to be the easiest thing to do. Uh, so those are updated. Uh, the 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 new policy and depreciated assets really. I I didn't think anything needed to be modified from the change in the language. Uh, Andrew did look at both of these and he said they're they're good. Uh, he he likes, he likes the language, so it's just whether you wanna tell, how much you wanna do with it now, so.
Okay. Good, good.
So we did not put the limitation in of the five thousand.
So it was the the ballot language doesn't have a limit in there? So I I I wasn't sure if you if you can be more restrictive, you probably could be more restrictive with the language and not less.
Well, I was trying to be responsive to Kurt's uh suggestion or, you know, comment about it that. That it didn't seem to be. Specific enough as to what what the limitations were on. On capital improvement, so. When Bill and I were looking it over before he put this capital, or before he got the the language of the uh of the ballot item. We had, we had thought that it would be appropriate to put the same amount in there that we use for. The bidding process because that really defines what we think. An important item is because if it's five thousand or more, then it has to be bid.
Yep.
So. So I did, in the case, we would call something of five thousand or more a capital item. So that it would track with our bidding process. But I don't know if you wanna do that or not.
So we do ha- I I did have some some, just some proposed things on the end there for. Uh, the, under the um, I guess it would be the definition for regular purchases. Uh. On on the second page, that it would be not less than that of a regular purchase for both items. I mean, we could, we could say. For capital ones that not less than five thousand. That, so that is something that we we had added. To make sure that the the depreciation accounts and capital improvement accounts we're using is for for bigger purchases, not just for incidental ones. So.
I don't understand what I I I'm having a hard time understanding what that. What that actually means.
So.
Capital improvement must be approved by the select board and shall be for not less than that of a regular purchase.
Right, so regular purchases are at least a thousand dollars?
Oh, go back to definition B on the front page.
Right.
Regular purchase. There it is.
So. Uh, we were trying to, trying to, trying to come up with a way to make this meaningful without being too wordy. Uh. But the, we wanted to make sure that the 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 depreciation account. In some instances was being used for almo- almost incidental purchases. So that wasn't really the intent, so putting that minimum, that floor of a thousand dollars in there was, uh, so. We did that, we, and that could be changed to, could be, you know. The depreciation account, I wasn't, I I think, I thought we could be more restrictive with the use of the funds, but we obviously can't be less restrictive than what the voters intended.
Wait a minute now. B says require competitive solicitation of quotes. That's a bid. Require bids. Don't we have other language in our policy that says that? It must, that anything over five must be competitively bid?
Except for the preferred vendor thing.
Right.
Yes.
So by inference, it would indicate that it's gotta be. Over five.
Uh, no, that's, that's major purchase. Regular purchase is a thousand to just under five thousand. I think the the point taken is that we don't want this to be a cookie jar for really small stuff.
That's right.
Right.
Which is why it should be five rather than one, right?
Well, we put in the major, we'd put in the per- the regular purchase, so that way if the regular purchase definition changed. That would change by default rather than, then we'd have more, then we'd have even more different amounts. So, so a regular purchase is defined as a thousand dollars. If down the road, you said a regular purchase is defined as two thousand dollars, and that would change that automatically without now having another different. Level.
Yeah, without the redone, yeah.
Yeah.
That's probably not bad.
So if you wanna see for capital improvement, like on the second page, would be not less than that of a of a major purchase, then that would. That would then make that floor five thousand, so.
Except, see, the first level of protection is that the select board has to approve it. So.
Yes.
So that's where if we think it's something like fifteen hundred bucks, no big deal, we'll just, you know, say, okay, it should come from there. If we up it to five thousand, I, and we just don't know. I would rather have the select board's eyes on these. Even if it's, yeah, okay, you know, cursory rather than skip the whole amount up to five thousand.
That was kinda my thought when, when I said regular purchase was, it just, it doesn't. Make it more difficult. It just gives it just a, just a little bit more review.
And we would be saying, okay, well, this still has to go out to bid, even if we.
Exactly. Yeah, it's, everything else still applies.
That's probably okay.
I think that's probably okay.
I was just thinking like. Thinking back, like Mike Rowe.
Yeah.
Bought the law more seat through his depreciation account, which if you look at the. The line for direct department, it says for purchase, repair, or maintenance of any recreation equipment. So he could use that to buy the seat, but the seat's not five thousand dollars. So I think the seat was, I can't remember how much that was, but I could, I could see a thousand dollars. I could see a thousand dollars being fine. You know, no, no.
A thousand, yeah.
Yeah, over a thousand. You know, no purchases under a thousand.
And that was kinda my thought that something under a thousand dollars really doesn't fall under a capital investment.
There should be some, it's some budget line that would cover.
It's a maintenance purchase at that point.
See, I kinda think it ought to be higher, but it doesn't, it doesn't really matter to me as long as the select board has the approval because three votes out of five and.
That's right.
There's a bit.
That's right.
I'm just trying to think like through all the different departments, what maintenance expenses might be. That, you know, it might be less than five thousand dollars for certain.
Yeah.
Right. And I think when you think of a capital purchase, you don't really usually think of seats and things like that. That's not a capital. Right, that's a maintenance item. It's a replacement.
Yeah, for like the capital improvement fund, I could see that being that five thousand dollar threshold. And then depreciation counts be a regular purchase.
Right.
Yeah.
Well.
Well, you like this language here?
I do. I would move that we approve the draft. Which was distributed today, so I put the date of eleven twenty-two twenty-two on it, which contained the changes that Bill just described.
There's a motion. There's a motion in the second discussion.
And I really, really liked the research you did because this is, tells us what our limits are with the voters, so thank you.
To say I'll, and I'll be all right. It says it right there.
So that's, that's what it is, you know. And I, I quickly realized that was gonna be pretty important, so, yeah, I just back and found it all.
Mm-hmm.
Awesome.
Sharon, you got any comments or questions or?
Nope, I agree.
Uh, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Heard that one, Sharon. Thank you. We now have a purchasing policy.
Okay, so I will, I will.
Could I just make the request that that we keep? The itemization of the ballot items with the, you know, just attach it to it and it should be made part of it.
My question, how much did you wanna keep? And we, I mean, it's not, it's no, no, no. Nobody's gonna keep it all.
Yeah.
Uh, and there was this one vote I hadn't had a chance to fill in yet. I just, I had to find a different book, so um, I'll fill that one in, but that is. That is it. Yep. Okay, so I will. Make this not a draft version for the. A a future meeting and uh.
Done.
That we can sign on it, and yeah.
Very good.
Yeah, okay, no problem. Good, thank you. Uh. The other one uh is the depreciated asset policy. I didn't. Make any changes to that language. I didn't, I didn't. Even going through the the ballot language, I didn't think. I don't think we needed to change anything. Because this isn't a purchasing policy, so it was just a kind of a disposal policy.
Do, is this brand new?
No, this is, this has been tabled for three or four meetings.
Okay. I guess I was concentrating on the other one.
The 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 policy itself is new. We don't have, we don't have a policy. This, this does not exist in any form right now. Andrew did look at both the update to the purchasing policy and this depreciated asset policy. He did look at both of them and said, he's good.
Okay.
He likes that.
Okay.
That this is the depreciated asset policy, I will fully, I I created from nothing like this. We don't have this. But based upon kind of what we, what we do and and kinda some of the best practices and I kinda went and stole ideas from other. Areas. Um, imitation of high form of flattery, so I stole from other people. Uh, and you know, just kinda came up with this, but just to kinda give a way that we can kinda hit uh uh. Give a guideline for the use down the road and. Because there's not really a cut and dry for every single scenario, trying to give some. Guidelines.
It looks like it works the way I read it.
The reserve status thing, should we have? Should that come back to just the select board instead of the department head or their designee? I don't know if we should, if that's something that. I I guess it depends on what you're reverbing, you know?
So that was, that's, that certainly is something that is a different, a different than what we do now, but you know. Trying to think about how to handle some of the stuff and it's like, yes, you want. Leaving department has to make a decision, like, you know, we hide, we, you know, we have Ed and Chris and and Dave. It's like.
Yeah.
It's their department, like. You know, can I say, hey, I'm looking at this, would it probably get discussed in a committee meeting? Al- almost certainly, you know, but again, it's like, how much? Do you want to get involved in the minutia of running the department versus just saying, here's your guidelines? We trust you to go forth and and follow them.
And we are in that triumvirate because it says. Department head, the select board, or their designee that.
Right.
Kinda covers our involvement if we want involvement.
And if, and if we go down, if we go for a year or two and say, hey, this is not working like we intended, you just change the policy, like, it's not like this. It's not a, it's not an ordinance, so it's just. You change it, that day becomes effective and that, that's you go on from there and, you know, we 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 kinda start some of these things and. And not knowing kinda how it's gonna work and that's kinda what I thought about this, but this gives. Like a way to say like, okay, we can, we can, we can do this. So, you know, things like a, like a, like a, like a pickup truck, we could say, well, well, it's. It's not a frontline piece of equipment anymore. We need to replace it, but we're gonna hang on to it just in case. Then there's no harm or foul, but if we wanna sell it, then yeah, the money goes back in the cap. Like, it's just, that's, it's just.
We should get this off the uh whole business.
Yeah.
Agenda.
Yep. It's been there for a little bit.
I think we tossed around the idea of having like a minimum. If. If it were, you know, an asset of worth more than a thousand dollars in it. But.
Yeah, we did. And I think the determining of value of something is so.
Nebulous.
Well, but it's, it, you know.
I know, because then you keep ten percent of the depreciated value anyway, even after it's fully depreciated, so.
Yeah, but you think of like a a rec asset versus a fire department asset versus a highway versus police, police, that's like what. How, uh, to try and, and, you know, I I did, so I did think about that and I spent a little time and I'm like. How we would determine on a global scale for a policy, the value of an asset is. Really difficult, you know, if, if it was like, if this was a policy for highway depreciation. Then that'd be easier to do, but. You know, it's, it, you know, I I don't think it's that. It doesn't come up that often that it becomes that big a problem and and most of these things get discussed. Like when Mike wanted to sell his mower, you know, he 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 kept bouncing numbers off me and I'm like, Mike, what do you think it's worth? Like, what's it gonna cost to buy a new one? Look at the used market, like, you know, check, check Facebook, Routsell sites, see what they're going for, you know, it's like, that's, that's kinda how you determine values now.
I have an idea.
Look at the boiler.
Yeah.
We put a price of two, we got two, that's it. Do you wanna second guess it and go back? Oh, well, we could have got twenty-five hundred, wow.
We still be hug, we're starting the thing somewhere, so. You know, this, this is, this is something that is new and, you know, I fully anticipated it being edited to to.
Okay. I have a proposal.
Sure.
Did the chair wanna hear my proposal?
Well, I'm all ears.
Okay. Alright, so the, I'm just concentrating on three C. All right, so the, I'm just concentrating on three, C, assigned to reserve status, the rest of it looks fine to me. And I would say, no, 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 maybe assigned to the reserve status at the discretion of the department head after consultation with the select board. And I would just take out the order designate, because I don't know what the hell that means.
That's fine with me.
I, I like that. You like that Kurt?
Yeah, so at the discretion.
Sharon, do you like that? Well, it's. Four of us that like it. It seems to be a vote to me, if somebody would make a motion.
Move, we approve the draft, town, town of Rutland depreciated assets policy. As prepared and then amended on eleven twenty-two twenty-two.
Motion's made, seconded, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none opposed, the policy is approved, eleven twenty-two twenty-two.
Alright, so I'll update that as well, look at that, two old business items off the table.
Yeah, and so we don't need any, well, yeah, you're going to have a clean.
Yeah, yeah, just don't, don't.
Signatures and all that jazz.
Yes, that's.
Okay, now, what do you got next, there's another one down.
Uh, there, uh, you want, the last old business item is the permit tracking ordinance.
Pass.
Yeah, Mary, Mary punted on that one, so we'll have to wait until.
Well, that, that one's ready, I mean, that, that's, the, the, the planning commission has gone over it, like, it's, I've, I've, I've. Taken a fresh look at the form, that's, that was, it's not in the packet, it's, it didn't, I didn't say anything, I didn't.
Well, I was looking for it and I didn't.
Well, I, you, I've sent it to you through or three or four times, so.
Well, since we did two tonight, we can pass on.
Alright, yeah, I'll, I'll accept that.
You know, we've done a good enough job.
Three is not the charm.
No, we did, we, we, we're doing okay, that's alright, uh, alright, on the desk, uh, there are two. Contractors application for payments, one is marked two and one is marked four. So, in working with uh, my person at the state of Vermont, V Trans, working on our grant. Request, reimbursement request for the Town Line Road Culvert, uh, we came across a discrepancy that we're missing, we're missing. Uh, money in the total, and come to find out, we didn't have a payment number two. Uh, in the, in the, in the packet, I'm like, well, we had a one and a three, like, alright, so I, I went. And asked Robert Clark from Outer Creek Engineering, I was, hey, do we have a payment number two, he's like, yeah, here it is, and we, we never got it, that was the sixty-four thousand, four hundred and forty dollars.
We never got the request.
Never got the request.
Wow.
Fabians, I call, I talked to Fabians today, they said, yep, we show it is open, I'm like, cool. Uh, and they said, oh, by the way, did you get number four? I'm like, huh, no. Uh, so, uh, I got these today, uh, they are not included in the orders. Uh, but I would ask kindly that you uh, would approve these and uh. Uh, that way we can, we, we can send it for, for payment sooner. Because once we send it for payment, then I can request our reimbursement sooner.
Okay, has the highway commissioner seen these and gone over them?
He has no idea these didn't existed, I got these late this afternoon, so.
I really think he probably ought to go over them. Well, but I'm only one vote.
It's fine, it's a.
Well, these have been, these have been approved by.
No, no.
No.
The work is done, like, we, we've, we gave them the, we gave them the big amount.
What I'm asking is, these are bills for work that was done.
Correct.
That is within the bid that we have already approved.
Yes.
So we just have to approve the payment.
Yes, uh, and.
Potential completion.
Yeah, that's true, we did, what's, i- is there any reserve from that?
No. Uh, so the total with these. Uh, with these four invoices for Fabians were at two ninety-four, one thirty-five. No, there's, there's no reserve left. So that's all, that's their, that's their four payments.
Assuming they had builders for them.
Yeah, we paid one and three, we, we never got two and four. So, not quite sure why, but.
And what was, was that within what they did with whatever?
Uh, we ended up, their bid was the two, so if you look at the top line there, the original contract price, we, we were over that, but we approved that. Because of the plantings that we needed to do.
Gotcha.
Two ninety-four, what was the total, two ninety-four?
Two ninety-four, one thirty-five.
Right, and eighty-nine, ninety-six to five thousand, yeah, that was the extra plantings.
Yep.
Was it five thousand? Yeah.
Yeah, there was actually a savings that we had in an earlier part of the project. And we, then we, we used that, that ended up coming out of another part of it, so, yeah, there's, there's four invoices, I mean, I have all the paperwork.
That was the ledge money that we didn't.
Yeah, yeah, we, we saved a little bit, so I have all of the invoices, I have a whole pile of stuff if you'd like to see it at some point.
Are you guys satisfied that it's done the way it should have been, now that everything is sugared out?
Looks good, mate.
Very nice.
I couldn't have done better myself.
Oh, you could have done equal.
Oh, you, I said I couldn't do better, I could have done equal.
Alright, so I would move that. Are you okay with us doing this? Okay. I would move that we approve um, the two contractor application for payment for the town right. Town Line Road Culvert Replacement Project, number two is in the amount of sixty-four thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. Number four is in the amount of eight thousand, five hundred, ten dollars. And to come from art, well, we budgeted for it, so.
More or less.
More or less.
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
That two ninety-four number is the number that you guys voted substantial completion on anyway.
Yes, yeah, it hasn't, it's not changing what we agreed to, it's just.
They need a couple more checks.
Approving the payment.
Right.
Yeah.
I would have been missing sixty-four grand.
I'm, I'm surprised we hadn't gotten a letter or a notification by somebody, I mean.
Okay.
From seven twenty?
Well, let's, let's just pay it quickly, so there's no interest.
So they're, 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 they're fine, there, there's no, there's no issue, it's just.
I would have been showing up my books.
It's, it's, it's good.
Any discussion on the motions? On the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Very good, it's approved and we'll get the checks written.
Okay.
That was our third one being the charm done.
Uh, there is, does, does your motion include him signing the owner line?
Yes.
Right, okay, I thought so.
Want me to do it on these copies?
Yes, that's fine, they're, they're, they're all the same, so, yep. Thank you, I don't have, I don't have, you don't have an original envelope this time, because I'd have any going, going into this one.
Done. Done. Hello?
Go ahead Sharon.
I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to. I, I'm gonna have to go rest, done.
Okay. Have a good Thanksgiving Sharon.
Sharon, take care of yourself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night Sharon.
Yep.
Eleven twenty-two, yes. Uh. In your packets are the updated general budget sheets. Uh. As updated as, as I could make them, there's still a, a couple blank lines, but most of the things are filled in. Uh, the last page, they're stapled together, the last page has a date that they were printed. Thank you, exactly, that's right there, thank you, um, I can't put them on every page, because Excel doesn't like that. Uh, so, that is as, as current as. I had available on Thursday. Uh, the meeting, we have, I think, our next meeting, what's the next budget meeting? Is it Monday?
Monday, next Tuesday.
No, it's Monday.
Monday.
That's right, because.
Yeah, we, yeah, we had.
By, by special request.
I had.
Yeah, so we, we have moved that one, so I have. Th- that general budget, I have highway is ready. Uh, I do not have the police or the fire budget drafts yet. So, um, oh, we do have rec, rec is good too, we have that one. Uh, so, um, I, I will, I, I don't know, I don't know what, what ones you intended to discuss. So I can make copies.
Well, we, we got to discuss them all pretty quick and we got to get.
Running for a time, because you have the.
We also have.
December, you have December twelve.
Yeah.
As the.
Final budget meeting.
Yes, final budget meeting, so.
Right.
Not a long time ago.
No.
So.
We may need, uh. We may need to have one in addition to our select board meeting, or either that or have a long extended select board meeting on the sixth.
But I didn't put the budget one here yet, Wimmy is here on Monday, but they're going to be a fine.
Okay, so we do.
Monday. Well.
Okay.
Monday, we should finish up the general and we should, if we've got the highway, we should be starting on that and. Fire and police, I imagine.
We, we have highway and rec. Ready.
Yeah, so we don't have fire and police.
I don't have the drafts for them, yeah, I, I think. I think they were waiting for the salary numbers to be finalized, but, I mean, if they want to just turn them, I mean, if, it's up to you, I mean, I, I, I. I haven't asked them, I haven't asked Ed or Chris for them. But if you want to say, hey, just give me what you got, we'll fill in the rest, that's fine too, I don't, I don't know how you want to handle that, so.
Well, uh, you know, we need, we need to have a final discussion on, on the salary amounts and they should be done sooner, but I'll tell you what. If there's anything that I don't want to do without five members here, it's that.
Well, I agree, yeah.
So.
Because that's just not fair.
I did. Uh, on, on your desks, you have a, a very large spreadsheet.
Yeah.
Which, uh, was done in collaboration with a few different people around to kind of put together just some.
Okay.
To extrapolate, we, we talked about the amount of time it takes to change the number at all, so. We kind of just took it and said, okay, here's, here's four different scenarios, so we gave you four scenarios. A- across the whole, across the whole, all of the budgets.
Okay.
So, that's what that really big sheet is for.
Alright, thank you.
That's, thank you, that's going to, that's helpful.
Um.
It'll speed things up a lot.
Well, that was, that, that was a thought, so we could take a look at it and, 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 and so if you have questions like. Uh, Carrie and, and Susan and I put that together, so we just kind of looked at them all and, and, and said, here's, here's what it is, so. Uh, but things like the uh, lifeguards, like Mike had put in like fifty-two thousand for lifeguards, there is the increase showing there, but he had put in fifty-two thousand. So, you know, there's some things that may get changed, but that's just there, just to kind of give you an idea overall about what the, what each, each impact would have. Um.
Yep.
Looks like we took a shot at just four different numbers to give you that, so, that's there for you to look at, um, and, and use it your pleasure. Uh, and we had asked, uh, awesome graphics to take a look at the signs coming into town. We have three, we have one Route seven north, just south of Pinnacle Ridge, we have one on Route four east. Just west of Town Line Road, and we have one over here by Charlie Boys, we don't have one Route seven south.
Half of one.
Half of one, uh, I just got three different, we, we, I also graphic went and looked at it, they have three different quotes for us. For three different type, the same sign constructed different, three different ways, like different levels of, kind of like a good, better, best, I don't, I don't, I didn't print them out. But it was a few thousand dollars to, to redo the signs, so. I, I, I didn't print them out, but I'll have them for an, another, another eating, but, did you, did you get a chance to see that?
I did.
Okay, so we had asked them to do that, we, we asked for three, I think that's what they gave us priced on, was three to replace, to replace what's there. Um, but I, I, I don't know, I'm not sure includes insulation, like, I, I don't really get into it, because there's just too much other stuff going on, so.
Okay.
But it would, there was, they have a good, better, best option, but those signs have been there actually for quite a while. I forget how far back they go, but they go back quite a ways, they, those, if those are original signs, they, they've lasted pretty well, so. Um, but they gave us some options for uh, replacing them, so we, we can, we can look at that.
They'll get back as far as Dick Del Bianco.
Uh, it's.
Uh, you know, it's possible, but I think we replace them somewhere along the line.
Might have, I'm not sure.
Might have done.
One over here in Center Island says it was donated by Rutland plywood or something.
Oh, really? Okay.
Nice.
Yeah, I believe it.
So.
So that's the good thing about being a town, it's not going to, we don't have to update according to the latest marketing craze, so.
Right, uh, so, um, I do have prices on that, I just, I just didn't get to it, so, uh. And I think. That's everything on my list. Yep, everything I got.
Any questions for Bill? Yeah, Bill.
Thank you.
And, oh, by the way. It wa- it was an interesting collaboration that Bill and I had on the tree out front, which you can see.
That's very nice, I was noticing it coming in.
Yes.
Bill said, well, we need to get something up top and how are we going to do that? So I made a call to one of our town residents who has been a very, very. Uh, magnanimous donor in the past of his time and equipment. Um, Brad LaFaso, who donated his, uh. One of his cherry picker trucks.
No, no, three, there were three of them parked out there.
No, but he donated one of them in, in a, in a previous year so that we could get the Tony Flori transfer station sign. Put up on the transfer station, no charge, that was like a four hour project or better. And so I gave him a call and I asked him if he would be willing to help us out with the lights. He said, well, do you have them? He said, no, not yet, he said, call me when you get them. Bill had them within what, four days?
Yeah.
Yeah, four days. Uh, I don't know, they came direct from China or what?
Well, no, not quite, but.
Four thousand of them.
Uh, three thousand.
Three thousand.
Uh, they're, they're not all on, we, there's one other long string which we could put up if we wanted to put more on it. But we wanted to see how it looked tonight and, and go from there, so if you, there is, there are some, there's one more long string that we could put on there if you wanted to, but. And that's, it's.
We said, one more at the bottom, because the bottom looks a little weak, the top looks, obviously looks nice, but.
There's, there's.
So he came. Yesterday.
Today.
Today, just today and put them up.
There's two thousand lights on it now.
So I got to tell you. Brad LaFaso, thank you very much.
Yeah, they did, he, he and his crew did a, did a very good job, yes.
These are good people.
They were, they were, they did very well.
Yes.
Very nice.
So there we have it, Merry Christmas and.
Not Thanksgiving.
Well. I know another person that would be very, very happy about the lights on the tree, and that would be. Um. Well, that would be Nick. Nick would be happy, Fred Nicholson.
Yeah.
Our tree warden. So. Thanks, Bill.
Absolutely.
And we don't have, I don't think we got any committee reports, I don't see any here. Schedule meetings, update, the project list is getting taken care of pretty well, actually.
Anything that needs to come off the project list?
Well, let's leave that for another time, we'll, we'll, we'll go through it, Bill, and take stuff off as we have accomplished it. Purchasing policy, draft policy and appreciated assets, any other old business, no. While. Uh, we won't be doing any more budget work tonight. We do have an executive session planned for this evening and I told, um. Our town attorney to be ready at eight, if you would call him, so he, because he was. Willing to participate. Good night, Dave.
Have a good night.
Safe trip home.
Thanksgiving. See, that's what you can say, you can say happy Thanksgiving, you can't say Merry Christmas yet.
No.
Oh, well.
Wait until.
Way too early.
Yep.
Way too early.
If I see lights on a spruce tree, it's. If, I didn't see any turkeys up there, it's just the thing.
I get, I get away from listening to the radio after Thanksgiving, oh, man.
So we have no other new business?
None that I can see unless other members have, uh, other new business, but, you know, Howard Burgess had requested an executive session. Uh. And. We will go into it as soon as we can get a hold of our attorney.
Who else is going to be in on it?
Well, Carrie, um. Well, Carrie um. Had said she would if, you know, and I, I, I think she should.
Alright.
Yeah, yeah, because well. The problem being, and you know, and this is for open session discussion. The problem being is that we don't really, we don't have anyone that's designated as an HR director.